Good evening, welcome. Please stand for the budge lead.
To the United States of America and to the Republic where rich citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under provisions of the public meeting law of the state of Missouri, the board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes the date, time, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and the agenda for the meeting was posted on Monday, March 10th, 2014, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Floris, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice for the agenda were mailed to the major, radio and television stations, to four newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Need motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second. I move by Mrs. Hogseth and seconded by Mr. Schrader to adopt the regular meeting agenda. Mr. Chabot.
Mr. Ebert.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Schrader.
Aye.
Ms. Hogseth.
Aye.
Secretary votes aye. Mr. Martinez is not present, so Mr. Morris.
Aye. Adoption of agenda for closed meeting. Section 610.012 of Missouri law provides for discussion of certain items in a closed meeting. Notice of proposed closed meeting, including the agenda item to be discussed, was posted. The board by roll call vote must vote to authorize a hold of closed meeting and approve the proposed agenda by reference to each subject to be discussed. The agenda for the closed meeting is legal, section 610.021.1. Personnel, section 610.023-021.3. And student discipline, section 610.021.6. Need motion to adopt the closed meeting agenda.
So moved.
Aye, second.
I move by Mrs. Hogseth and seconded by Mr. Chabot. Mr. Chabot.
Mr. Ebert.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Schrader.
Aye.
Ms. Hogseth.
Aye.
Mr. Martinez.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
All right, next we have state recognitions. Item number four, Ferguson-Floreson School District Students Compete in District Spelling Bee. Ms. Angela Anderson.
On February 10th and 11th, top scholars from each grade level and school-wide champions scholars competed in the annual Ferguson-Floreson School District Spelling Bee. These students demonstrated academic excellence and perseverance, having won competitions at their schools in order to reach the district-wide competition. Following students were awarded grade-level trophies. Brittany Jenkins, fourth-grade winner; Sarah Mueller, fifth-grade winner; Marissa Hughes, sixth-grade winner; Quentin Ford, seventh-grade winner; Alexandria Taylor, eighth-grade winner. Holman Elementary, fifth-grader Stephanie Estrada won the district spelling bee and received a championship trophy. In addition, two Ferguson-Floreson students, sixth-grader Megan Mathers of Commons Lane and eighth-grader Alexandria Taylor of Ferguson Middle School, qualified in the semifinals to compete in the 2014 Post-Dispatch Spelling Bee held March 1st at McHenry College. Both Megan and Alexandria finished in the top ten of the regional spelling bee.
These little trophies go to their respective schools in a trophy case forever. They got their big trophies at the spelling bee. And while he's handing those out, when these kids go to the championship spelling bee, the post-dispatch one, it's hundreds of children who try to qualify. Thirty-four are chosen. Two of them are standing right here, and they made it to the top ten.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Item number five, McClure High School Pomies to be recognized.
Ladies, if you guys want to come on up? While they're coming up, I do want to acknowledge our young ladies that you guys see before you. This is an awesome group of young ladies, model student athletes for our school. They work extremely hard under the leadership of Coach Reg Wesley Stewart and Jackie Allen. So again, I'm going to go ahead and begin. On February 15th, the McClure High School Pomies competed in the 2014 Missouri State Dance Team Championships at Kemper Arena in Kansas City. The team competed in a maximum of two categories, 4A Division Prop and 4A Division Kick, and took first place in both categories. While the Pomies have competed in state competition previously, taken first place in the prop category in 2009, 2012, 2013, this was the first time they've taken first place in both of the categories in which they have competed in. In addition, to the team award, the two students, sophomore Victoria Mantilla and senior Christina Merritt, received All-American Academic Awards for maintaining a non-weighted GPA of 3.7 or above. Head coach Reg Wesley Stewart was recognized for 15 years of service by the Missouri Dance Team Association. And again, if you didn't catch that, this is a three-peat for first place in state by these young ladies, so if we could, congratulations.
Hey ladies, did you bring music or can you do a routine for us?
I think I got one in there.
Can you face us, because I want to see.
All right.
I'd like to motion, if we're going to ask people to do that, that Ms. Hogseth brings music. Thanks. Put them on the spotlight back. Well done, ladies. Item number six, Support Staff of the Year Award. Dr. Wendy Dix.
The Ferguson-Floreson School District has named Miss Amanda Mandy Decray Office Manager at Robinwood Elementary School its 2014 Support Staff Employee of the Year. Miss Decray has served as the Ferguson-Floreson School District for 13 years, first as Building Aid at Halls Ferry Elementary School for eight and a half years, and currently as Office Manager at Robinwood Elementary School for five years. Miss Decray was selected for this honor based on her credentials, her demonstrated commitment to education, and the positive impact she has through her service to students in our district.
Good evening. The Ferguson-Floreson, first of all, I would like for Christina Reeves to come up and enjoy us, and let's see. Chris, do you have family members? Okay. The Ferguson-Floreson School District has named Miss Christina Reeves as the fifth-grade teacher at Combs Elementary School's 2014 Teacher of the Year. This Reeves has taught fifth-grade English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science for 15 years. In 2013, she received the Elementary Science Teacher of Missouri Award. Miss Reeves is currently enrolled in a PhD program at the University of Missouri St. Louis. Miss Reeves was selected for this honor based on her credentials, her demonstrated commitment to education, and the positive impact she has had through her service to students in our district. Thank you.
Before we get started with the board update, I just want to, as most of you know, Dr. McCoy tendered his resignation effective March 15th this afternoon to the Board of Education. Dr. McCoy and the board would like to make the following statement. It is mutually agreed and understood that full resolution of these matters is in the best interest of the Ferguson-Floreson School District. For those who have framed the issue as racially motivated, the parties are satisfied that each acted in good faith and with the best interests of the Ferguson-Floreson School District in mind. That being said, personnel records of Dr. McCoy are sealed and cannot be discussed by the board, and we will not answer any questions regarding those this evening. Only the statement that I just read is all we're going to say. With that being said, it's time for board update. We'll start with Mr. Ebert.
Actually, for once, I'm happy I followed that. I have the statement right here. My feelings on this statement, five, six months of turmoil, you know, hell, whatever you want to call it, whatever it means to you, hurt, pain, students, community. We were at meetings, everybody was over at McClure, you saw what that was like, so definitely the community spoke out on this. And we get this. Four lines. I guess I'll say, no surprise, I did not vote for this. And why? Because I believe that the students, the district, the community deserve more than this. Didn't matter which side of the fence you were on. Nobody will ever know what the problems were. Nobody will know what the charges are. Nobody will ever find a statement of fact-finding or anything as far as, you know, how that turned out, either for Dr. McCoy or for the school district. And, you know, some of the words in here. Even in these four lines, "acted in good faith." Well, you know, not to be too condescending here, but I guess the board can go out with Dr. McCoy next week to lunch and maybe iron out some, how's this line sound, philosophical differences? And then we can all go play golf. This is hard for me, not because it's about me, because I feel I've let everyone down. This is just my words, not the board's words. We are elected to represent the community. And from the depths of my soul, this should be, I guess, I don't know what the word would be, maybe not happy, but glad that we've put this behind us. And for me, it's pretty sad. I wish I could say words that would make a difference to people as an individual, but for me, I can only say, "I am deeply sorry." Deeply sorry. Wow, four lines. So I guess I'm done with this. People want a copy of this and, you know, it makes them feel good. I don't know. It's trash to me. I mean, anybody who wants it, they can get it out of the trash can. And I'll tell you. Wow. I better stop now. Well, I guess I'll, I got two more things. One, the Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Reeves has taught every one of my children, and she is awesome and does awesome work for this district. I mean, just unbelievable. And I did not have any part of that process or know about it, so when I hear it announced, I thought, wow, that's kind of cool, somebody that I saw actually do her work day in and day out, so my hats off to Mrs. Reeves. And I guess the last statement I have is about Chris Martinez. As far as I know, this is his last full public meeting. And it's really been an honor working with Chris in this capacity. I'm really going to miss bouncing things back and forth between us. He's brought a lot to this board and this community. I wish the best for him. I've had the honor of meeting him, his wife Megan, and his three lovely children. And I wish great things for you, because I know it isn't stopping here. Good job. That's all I got.
Mr. Brown. Well, the negotiations at this point are continuing on. Mr. Ebert and I have been attending. Just want to take my hat off to both sides. They're working well together, and I think it's very pleasing to watch them. Again, to Chris, I will also issue tremendous, you've been a good mentor. Thank you. Mr. Schrader.
I'd just like to refer to one of the board policies that we had that says board members will be encouraged to attend a national school boards conference each year, which is the National School Boards Association. This year, the president of the board has decided that no one will be attending due to financial concerns. I find that a bit presumptuous, that he would make that decision without consulting with the board. Since it's a board policy, the board should be the one to put that in advance if they choose not to follow it. Last Friday, I was invited to read Dr. Seuss at Johnson-Wolbach to Mr. Smith's fourth-grade class. A very enjoyable morning, however, I wasn't the famous person there. We had county executive duly, we had firefighters, we had police officers there. I mean, I think there were over 50 people in our Johnson-Wolbach School reading that day, and we got to showcase our great students and our great staff and what they do every day. I think in another week or two, my tongue will be untangled from trying to read Dr. Seuss out loud. Friday was also special. I had tickets to the St. Louis Symphony, and I walked in early, and low and behold, in the grand foyer, there's display set up of student artwork. It's called Picture the Music. Thousands of entries are sent from every school in the area. Each school can send seven pieces of art. We had four from Cool Valley and two from Halls Ferry selected to be displayed, and I got to meet the first grader at Cool Valley who was selected as the best first-grade entry. And I would hope that in maybe next month or thereafter, we can honor these students and particularly their teachers that go well beyond the contract to make this great education for our kids, and I want to thank them personally for that.
Ms. Hogseth.
I too would like to thank Chris for doing an awesome job as a board member, and you will be great in this. So come back soon.
Mr. Chabot.
I'm not going to thank Chris. He's already got it. Scott Ebert and I had the absolute pleasure of going to the Special School District Ambassador Awards Banquet last week. One of our own, Carrie Hickam, had received a recognition for her duties as president of the Parent Advisory Council with them. And also a shout-out to Dr. Tobias up at Hazelwood, as well as there's two other instructors that received awards through them too, but it was outstanding banquet. Scott and I both serve on the SSD Governing Council Committee, which is one of the great pleasures. Unfortunately, they only meet every three months, but, and I guess that's it.
Mr. Martinez. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, to Ms. Hogseth, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Ebert, thank you so much. I appreciate your comments, and I know I certainly learned from all of you and all of you, and will continue to, I will plan and continue to do so. Thank you. Earlier today, Dr. McCoy signed both a resignation letter and an agreement to a mutual statement, and then he proceeded to release a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 paragraph statement to NPR via email. Signed a mutual agreement, released another one. I have nothing more.
For the last five months, we have been, all of us, feeling a lot of pain. We're tired. It has caused much stress amongst the board members, the community, the staff, everything. And I have not read Dr. McCoy's thing. It was the first I heard of it. But as Mr. Martinez said, we agreed to a two-sentence statement, and apparently, Dr. McCoy chose differently. Mr. Royal. Oh, excuse me. Mr. Green is standing in Ms. Dugald's stead this evening as the NEA president-elect.
Good evening, board. Speaking for the FFNEA, my name is Frank Green. I'm the president-elect of the FFNEA, president next year. On behalf of the FFNEA, I would like to announce today that all we want to say is negotiations are going well, and appreciation is given to the hard work of all involved. Thank you.
Mr. Royal.
Good evening. A couple of events that I want to call attention to. Ferguson Middle School, tomorrow evening, has their Night at the Museum event. If you've seen it before, you would know how, or you would have learned how special it is. If you get the opportunity tomorrow evening, it begins, I believe, at 5:30. Students there do a wonderful job. The staff to be commended, and I think that if you get that opportunity, you will enjoy yourself immensely. Students do a breakout. Also, this Saturday, the Elementary Scholar Bowl will be held from 9 till 12, I believe it is, here. This coming Monday, the Strategic Planning Meeting will be held here at the Administration Center between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00 o'clock. As has been mentioned about negotiations, we're nearing, hopefully, the conclusion of negotiations. They should wrap up next week, and they have been going very well, and both sides are to be commended. We hope they continue with the fine work that they've been doing. We are approaching the conclusion of the third quarter, which means that it's testing time. It's nearing, and the window for MAP begins, in some schools, as early as April 7th. It varies by school. People would be encouraged to check with the schools to find out what that schedule is. And once again, students are encouraged to get plenty of rest, eat good breakfasts, you know, be in attendance every day and on time, because they are very important to the students as well as the success of this district. And that's all, so thank you very much. Mr. President.
Thank you.
Paul.
Yes, sir.
Larry's remarks about the Night at the Museum.
Larry's remarks about the night at the museum, my gosh, it is amazing. Took the kids there the first time I was on the board, you know, get an invite and wow. Every year, they ask me when it is. So anybody can get over there and check that out. It is just amazing. Those kids are just, I mean, they are just something else as far as playing their roles. So I strongly encourage that. Unfortunately, I'm on negotiations tomorrow when it is. But this is funny. My kid said, "Well, we'll go without you, Dad." That's how much they like it. So it's a great event.
Sounds good. I'm looking forward to my first night at the museum. I usually teach on Thursday nights and we're on spring break at Flow Valley this week, so I get to go. And that's great. I'm looking forward to it. The Board of Education will take a short recess, congratulate the spelling bee champions, the POMAs, the Staff Person of the Year, and the Teacher of the Year. It's a good night tonight. Thank you. 10 minutes. Thank you. The Board allocates this portion of the meeting for audience participation regarding its items listed on this evening's agenda. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the Board or request to speak from the podium identify themselves and limit their remarks to three minutes. In keeping with District Policy 4054 and 4059 and personnel law, speakers should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. According to policy, the Board will respond, will not respond to public comments. Time is allocated at the end of the public session for suggestions and/or questions from the audience on subjects that are not on tonight's agenda. Please identify the items 11 through 26 that will be addressed. Anyone like to speak for the agenda tonight? We have one?
Hello, everyone. My name is David Curry. First of all, I want to thank you for my children. They got out of school, went to law school, grad school, and did great. It's one of the reasons I moved here. I'm not gonna say too much about Dr. McCoy because-
Excuse me, Mr. Curry. What agenda item are you addressing?
The first one was, I don't know. I mean, it's so general, I'm not gonna be precipitous. The agenda item was really related to the minutes from last time around. And one of the agenda items was, there was 40 teachers that we paid them to retire. I really have a problem with that because one of the main reasons we were so great, we had these older, experienced teachers and we just paid them to go. We need that for our preservation. The other issue was, the graduation rate at one of your schools, 10%. That's just, I don't know the name of the school, but I can understand why some lady said, "There is no way my child will go here. It will be out." So I'm just saying that to say, we have failed. Failed as a community. And one of the greatest things around here about Dr. McCoy, we got more people participating. I'm not just saying, I'm just glad he found other ways. The other thing was our certification. Last board meeting, I didn't really understand that. I'm thinking it's the NEA, I don't know what that stands for, however, something with these teachers, got another certification. I don't know if this certification is in lieu by the state or made it for young teachers that haven't been certified. But my concern right now is, you know, I know I have a wife who's a teacher. I can see her like, you know, being up 10, 11 o'clock. There's no way that I could get teachers, okay, reading papers. The kind of concern is, does certification, is this something you want to eliminate different teachers? Is this something that's really gonna help them? I think about three minutes, but I probably could talk forever, but like I did, I liked the old way. I remember back when I first moved here, you know, I had nothing against an all-white board. They was teaching, the system was doing good. My whole deal, we like to see some productivity, okay? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Anybody else who'd like to speak to the agenda items this evening? Seeing none, we'll move along. Consent agenda items. The administration presents the following items for approval under the consent agenda. Minutes and dispersments. Dispersments, would you read the dispersments, Mr. Chabot?
Payroll, $7,563,314.01. Operational dispersments of $1,403,261.12 for a grand total of $8,966,575.13.
Second? That will be by Mrs. Hodgson, second by Mr. Schabot, Mr. Schrader, to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Critical instruction, building level progress. Dr. Adrian Bland and Ms. Nicole White.
Good evening. We have four schools this evening that are going to present unique programs that contribute to the overall success of their school. And their individual building strategic area focus plan PowerPoints were sent to the board for information as well. We will start with our first school, Tangi Oglesby, the airport interim principal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The two programs that I would like to present tonight are the group therapeutic mentoring sessions. They started in January and these services are provided by the Great Circle Foundation. They provide the students with a certified counselor and a certified social worker. And they lead these sessions three days out of a week for 60 to 90 minutes. And these sessions are for our fifth and sixth grade students. And the goal is to reduce the number of students who are in out-of-school suspension and in-school suspension. The objectives for the program are to help students with gaining an understanding about the importance of self-concept, to focus on ways to solve conflict and avoid conflict. They work with students on how to interact with others in a positive way. The focus is on being able to have self-control and they teach social skills as well. Another program that is in its second year of implementation will be our Young Scholars Program. And this program is sponsored by Marydale University and it focuses on identifying our top 10% of high-performing students at Airport in grades K through 3. Students are provided with advanced summer programs at Marydale University as well as programs here, a program here at the Probe Center in our district. Students have scaffolded instruction in the classrooms. And this is for our high-ability students with the goal of moving most of them into the district's gifted program. After, it could be several years, one student moved in after one year. So we're working toward that. Also, the program provides teachers with professional development. They take coursework through Marydale and the courses are here in the district, many times at Airport or Johnson-Wabash or Bermuda. Those are the three participating schools. And the teachers work toward gifted certification. The program offers parent workshops on how to develop scholar identities within their students, their children. These workshops are offered twice a year. Teachers are provided with workshops and there are extra funds to support Airport's robotics program as well. In addition, this past summer, sixth graders at Airport had the highest growth on the MAP test for Communication Arts and MAP district-wide, so that was awesome. Also, last year, we had 70 students who increased their reading level by one grade and then 10 students who increased by two grade levels. In August of 2012, only 28% of Airport students were reading on or above grade level. As of the December benchmark, we are at 44% and I'm pretty confident that we're continuing to climb. That's my presentation. Thank you.
Very good.
Do you have staff here?
I might have one. Ms. Green, are you here?
I'm here.
Hi, Ms. Green.
Our next presentation for the unique program is Holman Elementary School and the principal is Jamie Otto.
Good evening. I'm excited to present to you about Holman Elementary School. We have really embraced and taken off with the college and career theme. I've prepared a video for you and I want to explain just a few of the things that you will see. We kicked off our year by starting the school year, all of the staff. We wore college shirts from our alma mater so the kids could see where we went to school. Each classroom is its own college with its teacher's name and mascot. So as you walk down our hallways, there's a class pennant that hangs outside the doorway. Our hallways are lined with artwork and it tells what the kids want to be when they grow up. And there's a sentence or a picture explaining that. And we did that K through 6. We've been able to expose a lot of our students to the career that they choose to go into when they get older. We've made partnerships with UMSL. I've actually taken students to UMSL and sat in on a college education class. So a lot of that will be highlighted in my video. And that's my presentation.
And our next principal is Katie Sanders, Principal of Duchesne Elementary School.
Good evening. I'd like to share just a few things that are happening at Duchesne. As you can see, we have girls on the run as soon as I find their arm. And this is an activity that's involved the teachers, the students, and the parents. This is after-school activity where the children really practice. They learn a lot of healthy concepts. They work it out in science. They learn to use the calorie content for their food, to see what their goal is, if they want to lose weight, if they want to get stronger, if they want endurance, whatever. And it's on Saturday in downtown St. Louis, and so they really have a great time with that. Now, this is Mrs. Burkhart. She's one of our retired teachers. We have a big emphasis on science this year. Each of our professional development half-days, we have some of our retired teachers come in and they do science projects with our students. What you will see is that these students were dissecting a squid. And it was just really exciting for them. They work in partners, some of our older students, the teachers partner, and they go downstairs and work with the younger students. And so you see a lot of interactive activity. You see where the children are really learning to use all the science concept. We had a health bee by Schnucks that we sponsored for the first time last year. Ironically, we had another one yesterday and it's a great activity for the students. It's ran sort of like Jeopardy. The children ask questions and they have to answer them. As they answer their question, then they get to ask another question, sometimes depending upon what the topic is. And they participate. This happened again yesterday. These are pictures from last fall. But the children are becoming more and more involved and the community is becoming involved. One of the things that's interesting about the health bee is that the children are tying their back in with our science curriculum. This is our Duchesne MAP Appreciation Night where we invite the parents of the students who perform at a proficient or above to come in and have dinner and to celebrate with us because we know that we cannot make this happen without the parents' involvement. We have a full six-course meal that's available for them. I am a licensed chef and caterer and so we cook for the kids. They get individual certificates and we just have a grand time. Again, here's that. Just small pictures about our science program. You will see where the kids are really excited. One of the things about our science programs is that they're not always perfect. So you see the kids, I mean, they're really screaming. I was downstairs in my office and I heard the fifth graders upstairs screaming to the little kids, "Don't nobody move!" Because they wanted to win and there was a balance in a project. And as the little ones would get excited and move, everything would fall apart and they would have to start over again. And so you look at the pictures and you can see the disappointed children. And then you see the one in the background with his hands up, you know, the thrill of victory. And so we aim on real-life experiences. As well as at Duchesne, we do have after-school and before-school tutorials through 21st century. We have been fortunate to have Ms. Burrows come over with PAC. We have the robotics team, the robotics club. We have our parents' involvement. This year, on our December Star Assessment, 69% of our students were reading on or above grade level. We have some difficult things that we're working on. Our behaviors are down tremendously. As a school, we have, I have no staff here with me tonight because many of our teachers went to Teachers Academy today, some of them went to STEM today because they're taking advantage of this opportunity to be the best educators they could be. And when about eight of them told me they could not be here tonight, I said, "I'm not worried" because Ferguson Flores said, "We're a family." So this is us.
Ms. Nicole, is there anybody from Holman? I could try to add-
Oh, yes. She may have a few of your staff members here.
I do have staff members on, Deb Wright, Strachan Coach, Matherin Bill, fourth grade, Christina Fevel, the building support aide.
And our last school presentation this evening is McCorso Berkeley and our principal, Ms. Betty Fagan.
Good evening, everyone. At McCorso Berkeley, we have a new program. We just started it this summer. It's called LEAK Crew. It is a nationally recognized program. You have to be trained. You go to Chicago. It's about $3,500 to train one person. You are in training for exactly a week, a whole week, and you start 7:30 in the morning and you usually don't finish until 8 o'clock in line. It's very intense. Why LEAK Crew? Last year, we went through Advanced Ed. And so Advanced Ed charged MSB to address two areas during the accreditation review last year. One was to have a freshman transition program and one was to have technology in the classroom. So we are addressing both, actually. So we have technology in the classroom by having teachers that are doing it for the classroom. We also have teachers that are in training on their own. They're going to universities to be trained to be teachers of technology. So I have about three teachers that are doing that. And then I also have another teacher that is using resources from the district, from this area in district technology. And we're working on getting more training for the smart boards, how to use them more effectively and to have the students be more interactive. So what education is looking for now is not for the teachers to do all the talking, but for the students to be doing most of the talking. So what is LEAK Crew? LEAK Crew is a high school transitional program that really targets freshman students. You take your juniors, seniors, seniors in your schools that have already navigated high school and they adopt a freshman from Berkeley Middle School coming in. And so this summer, we had about 30 of my juniors and seniors trained to be LEAK Crew members or leaders. And so when the freshmen came in before school even started, we took about 90 of the McCorso Berkeley freshmen coming in and they went to training with my LEAK Crew members. And so what they talk about is how to navigate high school. And so what they target is high school orientation. What does it look like to be, to come from a middle school and to go into high school? What do you need to learn? They talk about the academics. What will it take to make you successful in school? We talk about social. What do you need to do? How do you need to respond to people if they say something inappropriate to you? And then we talk about just having a mentor throughout the whole year. So if you look at the picture, you see that these are students from Berkeley Middle. And we were sat up in the gymnasium and they were eagerly waiting to go into the orientation. And I have Charlie here. He's one of my LEAK Crew members that was trained this summer. And so this is an activity called 64 Squares. It's a process that helps students to recognize that there are juniors and seniors who have- It's a process that helps students to recognize that there are juniors and seniors who have navigated school successfully, and they're going to take them through some of the issues that they went through. And so here, you have your LEAK Crew members standing around, and they're talking about personal experiences that they had in high school, some of the adversities and some of the challenges that they had to overcome. So it might be peer pressure, it might be bullying, it may be not turning in homework. So here, it's called 64 Squares, and you see all the papers on the floor. On the papers, you can't see them because they're turned over, there might be an X. So as they tell their story on how there was a difficulty in their personal lives, then the students actually will step on the paper. If there's an X, that means that they didn't handle the problem correctly, so then you have to choose another step, and then it lets them know what they could have done to navigate that situation. And so you can see the kids here. You can't see the faces, but you see the legs. They're taking their walk on those 64 squares, and they're marking their path, their path. And so here, at the very end, you have your LEAK Crew leaders and you have your incoming freshmen discussing what they did and how they navigated those squares. So they're talking about whatever their personal problem was that the LEAK Crew member gave them. Did they not get through it because of lack of knowledge of how you are supposed to operate in high school? Or were you given some misleading information from a friend who said, "If you're in this teacher's class, you need to do this"? Or just did you follow the wrong group of people, and that's why you didn't make it through the 64 squares? So I'm going to have Jared tell a little bit more about it.
Good evening, everybody. When I first was introduced to LEAK Crew, one of the first activities we did during training was 64 Squares, and the activity was so hard that when it came time for freshman orientation, we changed it just a little bit to make it easier for the incoming freshmen. I remember taking it, there's a certain path that there is to get out of the maze, that is the squares on the floor. And when you make a wrong step, you just come back, and you're trying to follow the people in front of you that are leading you, and you follow the steps that they made, and you look at the steps they took and the path that they took, and you follow that as closely as you can to try to get out of it successfully. And once you get out of it, your LEAK Crew leader will take you on that same path, step by step, and give you a short anecdote or a short story about one of their experiences in high school. I remember one of the first stories that I told was about my freshman year. I got there, and I was really excited. I decided I was going to get in all the different clubs and different activities, and I got in. And I did really well first semester. Second semester, things started to drop off, and then everything I thought could happen, would happen. I had health issues, I had family issues, but overall, by the end of my sophomore year, I started to pull it back together, get my GPA back to where I wanted to be from the damage that I did freshman year, and that was to let the freshmen know that freshman year is not a time to play, it's not a time to be silly, because then you spend the rest of your high school career trying to regroup. So 64 Squares was a great activity for us to do, especially with the ones that we go in the classrooms too, and we tell these stories, the same stories, and we remind them of the same things that we did.
And they meet every Friday, do an advisement. So Jared has his own group of freshmen that he is still with. So the freshmen, if they're having any kind of difficulties, they can go to him, and they can talk about it on that Friday, if it's with the teacher or if it's with another student. So it makes the freshmen more successful, and it takes down, if you read the research, freshmen have the hardest time in high school, and you lose a lot of the freshmen doing the high school because their low GPAs, behaviors, so on and so forth. So LEAK Crew is, the program is known to help you, your freshmen, navigate high school more successfully. And actually, I have to be very honest, when I talk to my assistant principals, we're all saying this year, this has been the best year for the freshmen in our high school. So we're really proud of it. I was training as a LEAK Crew in a different district, and the teacher that also did the training this summer was also trained as a LEAK Crew in a different district. So I just wanted to let you know that, but it's an awesome program, and we have really enjoyed it. Thank you. So if you want more information about LEAK Crew, you can go to the link, you can just click on it, and it's there for you, so you can read all about it. Thank you again.
Do you have anybody with you from McCorse of Berkeley?
I do. I have Coach Tracy here, and who else? Judy Shaw, and I have a couple more.
Roderick here.
And James. Awesome. And plus my senior, Jared. Thank you.
Nicole, I just want to say that I have really enjoyed this year's presentations. Not that the others were bad, but I've enjoyed that they focused on one thing they can tell about in their school, and I think I've learned more, and I just wanted to tell you I've enjoyed it a lot more this year.
Thank you for having me back. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Career and Technical Education Report, Mr. Jay Wolich.
Good evening, board, audience. I'm here to talk about Career and Tech Ed Department and our involvement with Career and Pathways across career. We have seven vocationally-certified programs in each of the high schools. They're offered at all the high schools. Our Advanced Manufacturing Program is only housed at McCorse, and there'll be more on that in a minute. At the middle school, we offer three programs, computer literacy, family consumer science, and gateway to technologies, the engineered, the legal, to our programs at the high school. However, at Berkeley Middle, we do not offer computer literacy due to a staffing issue. Currently, we are involved in seven grants with DESI, Boeing, and the Department of Economic Development. Total for the grants this year are $441,234, with a matching cost of $140,861.60, with a difference of $303,72.40. So we have them for the middle school and high schools. Next year, the middle school grants have run their course, so we won't be putting it for those for next year. Pathways of prosperity. In February of 2014, Harvard School of Education, Graduate School of Education, came out with this report, and it was, it's 37 pages long, kind of a quick read, a little dry in a few places, if you want to download it. But it talked about career and tech, it's talking about a change in the way we think about education, okay? And high-demand jobs, high-wage jobs. The report's broken down into thirds, talks about part one, the history of education and work. Part two, talked about the changes in both over the last 20 to 30 years. And the third section was more of an action plan, talks about where we need to do and where we need to go. It focused on business involvement, career pathways, elementary through community college, which is just an elongated version of a program study, which we already had in place from Tech Prep, but that money has dried up. Intermediaries for internships, talks about experiential learning, just not only for the students, but for the teachers, so they can bring back to the classroom. It talked about college debt and choice of majors. And it's based off the Swiss model of education. Now, somebody might be thinking, "Why the Swiss? It's about the size of Missouri." Well, yes, it is, but they have about 2% unemployment for 16- to 26-year-olds. In America, at the time, they were running about 28% to 25% in the following categories: males 16 to 19, males 20 to 23, males 24 to 26. So, you know, maybe we can look at this, you can say it's because of the recession, people aren't retiring, you know? There's a bunch of variables in there, but we're educators, so we're looking at it from an education standpoint. And I'd like to talk about business involvement. Usually, it just used to be donations, which we will still take donations, anybody would like to offer, but these are different fields, the way that business can be involved, and surprisingly, a lot of them are on board with this. You know, it's just getting in contact with the right people. What this says to me, you know, when I read it, this is what I took from it, Harvard is endorsing two-year associate's degrees, which, when I go and give this presentation to high school, middle school, and elementary teachers at their staff meetings, that's the hard sell, because everybody in the room has a four-year degree, and everybody in the room either has or is working on a master's. And when you tell them, "Hey, if you tell your kids to go into one of these four areas", you know, there's a possibility they might make more than you the first year out, they're out of school. For example, nurses, two-year associates, it's a certification with the state, average in St. Louis County Metropolitan Area, it's $60,000. That's an Ameri- that's an AmeriSta. So that's huge. Dual credit, they're pushing dual credit. That's taking money out of their pocket in the long run, you know? So they endorse certifications, experiential learning, like I said, and obviously work on skills. So what we have done with it, we started our Advanced Manufacturing Program here this year. We house it at McCorse. We partner with the Carpenters Union and St. Louis Community College. What we're offering the students, now first of all, it's a three-period class. It's like North County Tech at Ferguson Flores, okay? And we're busing kids from the other two high schools that sign up to McCorse. They go three periods, and then we send them back home. And if they stay with us two years, they're going to have 10 hours of dual credit, they're going to have, being offered, seven national certifications. The top one, Certified Production Technician, is our test out with DESI, it's our interim program, and it has additional 12 credit hours. So when they come out, well, and we're also working on summer internships. We thought we were going to pay for them, we have funds, made some phone calls, Workforce Investment Act funds, those funds have dried up. I've talked with Mears Goodwill, they were bragging about something they had going, but it was only down the city, so we're looking at other options. But anyway, when they come out of the program, they're going to have advanced ed with the Carpenters Union, they're going to have 22 hours of a 64-hour two-year associate's degree, and that can transition to an online four-year degree from SEMO in technology management. Now, on the elementary and middle school level, it's my opinion, and mine only, that an elementary school teacher has a tremendous amount of influence on the child. I can remember all my elementary teachers, not so much my high school and middle school. But, and for a lot of folks in the education business, we went from one side of the desk to the other. We went to high school, went to college, maybe got a master's, maybe just went straight into the profession, and then we turned around and we were teaching. You know, a lot of people don't know about the opportunities that are out there, and just not elementary teachers, high school and middle school as well. So the best way, I could think, to introduce them, and so they just hear it from somebody else other than myself, is that on our half-day PD days, we're taking elementary teachers from schools, and we're taking them over to North County Tech. If they toured our facilities, all of our folks, and the kids are gone, and our folks are at meetings, so they just see an empty room. Over there, they can see their former students working in shops, they can hear about success stories and what these kind of money these folks are making. So here's the teachers from Halls Ferry. We took them in October, and many of them were quite impressed. So in wrapping up, goals for next year are pretty much the same as the goals for this year. Increase our visibility, get our completer numbers up, so we can have more kids taking the technical skills attainment to help with the IMSA five scores. Keep, continue to build partnerships with industry, and align our programs with universities, and keep our CTSO, Career Student Technical Organization, strong. The top four all went to competition this year, I believe. And the FCC LA kids medal, the DECK and FBLA kids are getting ready to go to state, so hopefully, next month, we'll have some medals for you. And stay tuned with IMSA five. Are there any questions from the board?
I need to accept the report.
Second. I move the second to separate the board.
Jay, on the report you gave us, you had a few more pages there about the A-plus Schools Program.
Yes.
And let me get me finished, because I know you like to talk about this, so I'll try to be focused on this. You've got a lot of technical schools listed on one of the last pages, Rankin, State Fair Community College, Lynn State. Other than the St. Louis Community College, where can kids go specifically for technical education with their A-plus money?
They can go to any community college in the state of Missouri, and it will pay their tuition. Four-year universities, some of them give some type of scholarship, but it's $500 semester, maybe $1,000 semester, and that's up to each university, all right? Lynn State, it will pay the tuition fees, not the housing. Rankin, Rankin's about $19,000 a year, depending on the program you take. It's pretty pricey, but they have like 95% placement within six months.
Yeah, if I could make a comment on that, my wife and her sister and I got to tour Rankin a few weeks ago, and it's really, really, really very impressive.
Very impressive.
And one of the things my wife asks particularly is, "How do you have all your students, how do you get such good-looking students? I mean, well-dressed, well-groomed, super manners, how do you do that? These are just, you know, regular kids." And we were told, and I presume the sister at other schools too, is, I forget exactly the name of the grade, but they have basically worked out the grade, that you have to be on time, you have to be well-groomed, you know, if you're in an auto shop, you've got to wear your safety glasses, you've got to wear your uniform, that's just part of it. And to the extent that we don't care how good your skills are, if you don't pass on that grade, we won't graduate you.
Right.
And that was very impressive. And yeah, it's amazing, but these technical programs offer so much to our kids. If kids don't want to do a four-year program, these technical programs are fantastic, and the placement and the possibilities are really, really very good.
I'd like to also add that I tell the story from time to time. My best friend has four children. They all have degrees, I think a couple of them have masters degrees, except for one. And he is a carpenter, and he has worked himself up to be, if you want to say, I don't know, head of whatever that comes, the crew that builds the houses and stuff. Well, at family reunions, he's always asked, kind of old Joe here, you know? Well, guess who loans all his other kids the money? So it's neat that you're getting that out, because a good life can be had by these trades. And you really don't hear that a lot. Of course, like anything, you have to be good at what you do, but yeah, his one son without the degree is succeeding quite well, not to mention that he built the house for his mom and dad, that's an extra plus.
Right. Look at some huge turnover in all these trades and industries, after structure trades, so. Any more questions for Mr.?
I just have one. Just curious, what's the total number of students that are part of the program? Combined programs?
Well, every student has to take one credit of Career and Technical Education throughout their, to graduate. And if they take three credits in a specific pathway, then we can count them as completer. So at any given time, every kid during his high school year, so whatever our high school population is, but to give you a number today, I can't, but...
I know there's a, or was a bill out to give credit for, more credit for Career and Technical Education, where you could swap an English or a Social Security, where that stands?
It's on the floor.
On the floor.
I believe.
Okay. You know, being a former Career and Technical Education teacher, I support that bill that would allow students to trade some of their credits for staying down the shop or whatever.
Right. They, that was on, they were having a hearing on that on the CTU legislative day, and that place was jam-packed with FFA kids, FBLA. We, South had some students down there.
What day is that?
That was February 12th of this year, Wednesday.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor to accept the report for Career and Technical Education. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Wolich. And Mr. Wolich has been here for how many years now?
This is year five for me.
It's year five, and I want to tell you that in five years, he has really changed the face of Career and Technical Education for Ferguson Flores School, this marvelous God. I want to thank you for that, so thank you. A-plus School Report, Uncle Farmer, Mr. Wolich. Besides doing Career and Technical Education, Mr. Wolich is also the A-plus coordinator for McCorse of Berkeley. MS Wolf is the A-plus coordinator for the other two high schools, McCorse and Corinor. So your report?
Good evening. As you know, every year...
As you know, every year, A-plus brings a report to the board. And we bring our partnership plan for your acceptance of it and for any changes, deletions. And we have a couple of changes due to changes within the state. And also, our Career and College Planning Guide this year has the career pathways in the guide itself to hopefully help students more plan better on where they're going to be doing after high school. So, on page three of the partnership plan, we added that. And then on page four, the state of Missouri no longer does the GED program. It's called High School Equivalency. So, we've just made, we would like to make that change. And our recovery credits have been, the names have been changing based on vendors that we use. So, in order to make it to where we're not up here changing it all the time, is we'd like to just say that online credit recovery, but using the district-approved vendor. And those are our only two changes, those are our only changes. Does anybody have any questions?
Need a motion to accept the report?
I move to accept the report.
Second. A move by Mr. Schrader and a second by Mr. Martinez, any discussion?
She asked a couple of quick questions that we referenced in the last presentation there, some legislature. And I had to bring it up to make sure I was familiar with it again. But I know A-plus is occasionally a hot topic in Jefferson City. One of the, one of the bills actually talks about expanding A-plus outside of the public school arena. And can you speak to that at all, to help us understand a little bit about that?
There are a number of legislatures who believe that A-plus should be given to students who are outside of the public schools. There are only eleven high schools in the state of Missouri that are not A-plus designated.
That are not?
That are not.
Oh.
Public. Obviously, all of the private schools are not, because it, up until a couple of years ago, it was always under the auspices of DESI. And you got into all the separations and DESI doesn't go into public, into private schools. And they occasionally bring that up. I know that the governor would like to expand it to the three, to the eleven schools that are not A-plus designated. And they talk about it, I believe, at some committee right now.
Well, I noticed there's another bill that actually would allow individual students to be eligible for A-plus, regardless of whether their school is officially an A-plus school or not.
Right.
And then another one that would allow students to retroactively claim refunds based on college classes that they took while they were in high school. So, some of these may not be bad ideas, but I'm wondering, maybe as this moves forward, you could help us understand, well, help these guys and whoever's sitting here, understand how that, those different decisions may affect, 'cause there's, 'cause I'm certain that there may be more kids in it, and great for them, but there ain't gonna be more money in it. So, so it's gonna be spread out differently, I suspect. And so, it'd just be nice to kinda get an update, you know, periodically as to.
Okay.
How that works.
We could definitely do that. I do know that both the governor and the legislature is looking at fully funding A-plus. It's probably the only program within higher ed that has not been cut and has always been, because of more schools coming in, has always been increased. And then schools have always been designated in April, so their graduating class, it wasn't figured in, but they've always, they have always funded it. But there, unless legislatures change things, there will be no more schools. So, they'll have an idea of how much funding, but this is the first time that we'll be fully funded.
Thanks.
Any more comments, questions? Seeing none, motions on the floor to accept the A-plus report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Madryzic, preliminary budget. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Beals, we skipped you. How can we do that?
I'll be clear.
Totally kind of gotten it down to a page, is that correct?
Not quite. Good evening, board and audience. The annual student expectation committee has met and completed their work of the review of the student code of conduct. And I'm happy to say there was some great dialogue. Unhappy to report that it was not reduced. Too many English teachers and long-running people on the committee, so we're not able to reduce it a whole lot. But it was great dialogue, I thought. And I do wanna thank everyone for their service on the committee. Very important conversations that were had. There were a couple of changes, not a whole lot of changes, but just minor changes that I would like to mention this evening. Of course, there were changes for grammar and language, but some of the changes that we thought that were very important, that would make the student code of conduct be more effective. One of the areas we talked about was academic administrative placement, no longer being standard ten. In the past, we did suspend students for academic, academic failure. If they would receive three or more abs, they would be put on academic probation and then they would be suspended. We've changed, we changed that a couple of years ago to just make it academic administrative placement. So, we did not suspend students. They would not lose any time out. We would simply transfer those students, rather than them being suspended, to the alternative program or in some other programs if they could try and pick up their grades. We're continuing to do that, but we no longer made it a standard, a type one, which meant that students would be suspended. And we just thought that that was a great move for students and students would not lose valuable class time and instruction time. But in that, so that's one of the changes. Also, habitual truancy. We moved it from eight days to ten days. And the reason for that, we know that attendance is very, very important. But the main reason for that is that when you make reports, especially when you hotline students for educational neglect to the parents, that really has a lot of teeth. But a lot of times, agencies won't take the report unless students have missed ten days. So, we thought that it would be, just make more sense to have our policy aligned with what agencies do in terms of truancy. And the last change we thought was very, very important had to do with tobacco products. Just including e-cigarettes in our tobacco products. As many of you all may know, e-cigarettes are becoming more and more popular. In fact, they're trickling down, especially with the cost of them going down to students who are even using them. And they actually, actually don't like these, they're just, you know, but there is smoke in some who contain nicotine. So, we thought it was very important to be ahead of the curve on that and include that in the student code of conduct as well. But other than that, those are the changes that the committee felt that was necessary for this year's student code of conduct.
Thank you. Any other motion to accept? Oh, first rate, you're right, you're right. For information, thank you, Mr. Beals.
I will say that I served on his committee last year.
Yes.
And I kinda hoped, like you mentioned, you could stream it down to one page. But the number one reason was the legal aspect of it. And I think it's important to mention it to the community, because before I got on the committee, I had no understanding how legally tied document it was. So, you know, and I'm saying that, 'cause it's one of the number one things I get calls on.
Absolutely.
And it's not as simple as it sounds like, here, can't we just have a quick little thing to hand out? I mean, it's, it's quite an involved process, so.
Any more comments on the code of conduct for Mr. Beals? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Beals. Appreciate all your hard work on the code of conduct. Now, Ms. Madryzic, and our preliminary budget.
All right. The board was presented with a preliminary budget for fourteen fifteen, which includes estimates of the thirteen, fourteen revenue expenditures, as well as projections for next year. Now, keep in mind, this is very preliminary, because we do not have our data yet from the county as far as our assessments, and also the state. Budget has not been approved. There's a lot of fighting going on about that right now, and that will not be approved until May. So, these numbers are very preliminary. I'm sorry, I'm not the technology person. Okay, it's kinda hard to see on these screens. However, looking at the revenue sources coming in for next year, we are anticipated to receive about sixty-six point eight million dollars in local funds, which is fifty-five percent of our budget. So, our largest portion of the budget is made up of local funds. Thirty-six percent of our funds come from the state, which is forty-three point two million dollars. We receive about nine point five million dollars, or eight percent, from the federal government. We receive about one point six from the county. And then we receive very little funding from other school districts or other sources. So, the local revenue budget is anticipated to bring in sixty-six point seven million dollars next year. Sixty-three of that is local property tax. It's also made up of delinquent property tax, local sales tax, which is, or sales tax, which is Prop C, interest income, proceeds from our lunch sales, community education revenue, and then there's some other miscellaneous revenue that we receive. I wanted to show a historical assessed valuation, since our largest amount of money comes from our local taxes. As over the last seven years, we have seen a decline of revenue, or a decline in the assessed valuation of about eight hundred and ninety-three million dollars. So, as you can see, our assessed valuation continues to decline. This year, for fourteen fifteen, it's a non-assessment year. So, historically, in a non-assessment year, we'll see a loss of about three point seven million dollars. So, in my local revenue assumptions, I did a projection of about a drop of one million dollars, and that's about three point seven million dollars from the prior year. Sales were up on proper, on sales tax, and they're up from about three percents, from three percent from the prior year. Last year in January, the sales slowed considerably. So, I was very conservative on my, on my trends, because I didn't wanna make sure, I didn't wanna overestimate that. I did a look at our historical local revenue. Over the last year, we've seen, well, from eleven to twelve to twelve thirteen, you can see a significant drop. It was four point two million dollars in revenue that we lost in those two years. And then we, I anticipate that we'll see a change of about five point five million dollars in the budget of fourteen fifteen. Well, the total, fourteen fifteen from eleven, twelve. County tax revenue, that revenue typically remains the same. And I think it will bring in about one point six million dollars in those. And those contain fines and forfeitures and also state assessed utilities. Our state revenue, we are anticipating that we'll receive about forty-three point two million dollars. And that is basically our foundation formula, which is made up of basic formula, and also classroom trust, which is a casino revenue. We also receive money for transportation, parents' first teachers, and early childhood special ed. On my state revenue assumptions in the preliminary budget, the governor is calling for an increase to the foundation formula for fourteen fifteen. That's, that's a highly debated topic right now. And so, I was very conservative. DESI says to be very conservative with these projections. So, in the preliminary budget, because we don't really, don't really know until May, I used very conservative numbers. And I based the revenue estimates on historical trends. So, as you can see in our historical numbers, the actual numbers from eleven, twelve to budget of fourteen fifteen, we have seen a decline in state revenue also. And then with our federal revenue assumptions, actually, we will not see, I don't anticipate it into a reduction of the allocations, because we do have a high number of free to reduce student population. The, there was an assumption last year that we would go to see a ten percent decrease every year, but I don't believe that we're going to see that now. So, in federal revenue, we should, we should receive about nine point five or nine point six million dollars. And that's because we receive money for free and reduced lunches and breakfast program. And we do receive money for Title I, Title II, Title III, and some school improvement grants that we have. And then we also received some money from, from other school districts, about three hundred thousand for homeless transportation. I do, did not include in my other revenue projections for the transfer students, because at this time, again, there are question marks about that, and we don't know how, how that funding is going to come in. So, those numbers are not included in my preliminary budget. So, once we receive, figure out how much we're going to receive, we try to build our budget around the revenue. The expenditure assumptions that I had in the preliminary budget were staffing. I made the salaries and staffing status quo. I didn't increase or decrease the staffing, and I didn't give anybody a raise. And the insurance indications from the first quarter, our insurance indicate that there is going to be a larger amount of, or there was a larger amount of claims in the first quarter. And so, I added a five percent increase to the insurance. And then budget reductions, we did have input from many district stakeholders, because we are gonna have a budget deficit. And so, we have identified budget reductions, but they were not included in the preliminary budget. So, expenditures by function, sixty-eight point seven million dollars will be allocated towards instruction. Again, I apologize for the color on that, you can't really see it very well. Our next largest amount of expenditures would be seventeen point five, and that's for facilities. Twelve point one goes to support student services, which includes your guidance counselors, your nurses, and your social workers, people like that. Eleven point four percent of our money goes towards food service, transportation, the finance office, and, I think that's it, and security. And then the rest of it goes into like community services. We have a little bit that goes into the debt service and bond expenditures also. So, for a summary, our beginning balance, I believe, is going to be about twenty-four point one million dollars with a revenue of one hundred and twenty-one point five million. We'll have expenditures of one hundred and thirty-four point million with an ending balance of ten point eight. So, we will end up with a fund balance of seven point five million dollars with a deficit of seven million dollars. However, we are working towards fixing that. I did go yesterday to the state, to Jeff City, and received some interesting news. The governor, well, first off, classroom trust, which is part of our, our state funding, is, their casino is based on our casino revenue. And they said that the casinos were doing very well in the spring, and so they set the budget pretty high for that. And there's no way, all of a sudden, people stopped gambling. And so, the revenue went down considerably, and they're not going to be able to meet them the anticipated amount that they set in the budget. So, the governor Nixon recommended forty-four million dollars be included in a supplemental budget to help cover that loss, because otherwise, the district will not receive the money that we anticipated. The House Budget Committee has approved twenty-two million of the forty-four million that Governor Nixon did approve and, or suggest. And so, hopefully, that will pass through, so that we can receive some money and not have such a loss in the casino revenue. Also, Prop C revenue at the end of February was up, five point one percent from February of two thousand thirteen. So, additional revenue is going to be distributed through June. And that's good news to us, because we should see about three hundred thousand dollars more in Prop C revenue for this year and three hundred thousand for, for next year. So, that is actually the first bit of good news that we had. For next year, the governor and the legislator leaders, this is the first time in recent memory that they have not had a consensus on the revenue forecast. The governor has built into his budget an increase of general revenue of five percent, but the legislators don't believe it's gonna come in at five percent. They're being a little bit lower at four percent. So, again, DESI's, you know, that, we will not know what's gonna happen until May of this year. So, does anybody have any questions?
You probably said this, but refresh my memory. What is the number one expenditure of the district? I mean, what is the?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I didn't say that in this presentation. Our number one expenditure is for salaries and fringe benefits. It's, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
The largest amount of our, of our budget, eighty-six percent of our budget goes towards salary benefits. So, that's the largest, but.
Right, that's what I was asking.
Okay.
I wasn't really sure you had it broke down in the pie chart.
In this, in this.
And I saw nurses over here.
Yeah. Actually, I think that was in the presentation from before. I don't think I addressed that in this.
So, eighty-six percent?
Yes, eighty-six percent of our budget does go towards, towards salary benefits.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Yeah, please. Thank you, Laura, that's really good. Can you quickly, a couple of questions about the, what's the twenty-two million and then the forty-four? Forty-four million would reconcile the entire delta on the casino funds?
Yes.
So, that would be, okay.
Right.
So, and then they approved half of that?
Half of that.
Okay. And so, twenty-two million, what does that represent in terms of? And so 22 million, what does that represent in terms of the total state funding? You know, it's, it's relevant to what, 22 million sounds like a lot of money.
It is. I don't know what the total general budget is for the state and for, for the.
If memory strikes me that somewhere in the $3 billion would be.
Yes, yes, yes.
So 300 million would be 10%, right? Probably math majors. So 30 million would be what? So that, so 22 million would be less than 1%.
That's correct.
Yeah?
That's correct. And that almost didn't happen. Actually, this is a funny story. They told us, not funny, but they were not going to pass the 44 million at all. They weren't going to give them any money. And a, a school business person like myself from Jeff City found out about that that was not, that was going to go away, and he called his representative in Columbia, and he said, "Look, this is, we're going to really lose a lot of money here." And then he said, "Can I come talk to you?" He said, "You've got 10 minutes, and if you can get here in two minutes, I'll talk to you for five minutes." And so he hurried up and hightailed it over there and, and showed him the numbers and said, "Look, school districts are going to lose all this money if you don't do this." And so, so on the floor, they allowed for $22 million for that change. They were not going to pass it. So that's what people can do.
Who's that person?
He's from Jeff City, and he's, Jason, I can't think of his last name, but he's very sharp. And so that's how important it is for us to talk to our legislators, for them to understand, this is what you're doing to our school districts. You're crippling us because you're not giving us the funding that we need, so.
Yeah, thanks. When, when, it's just always helpful to put that into perspective, and I'm not blaming you at all, but you know, I mean, that, those are just facts, 22 million, but it's always helpful to see relevant ones.
Right, exactly.
You know, and, okay, thank you.
This is for information only, so can I have any questions, Mr. Trisick? I know we've been over this before in.
I feel like I'm getting a.
Other ways, so. But without cuts coming and ending up with a 7.5 reserves at the end of next year, if we keep things as they are, are not good.
No, it'll take us two years to, to not have a reserve, or not to have, not to have a balance, so.
Right. But we have to have some cuts.
Right, we're not going to let that happen.
Have to have them, just so everybody's aware of that.
And just for clarity, the 7.5% of our annual budget that we would have, I'm just making sure the language is not lost.
Right.
And the reason I asked my question was if 86% are for the people that work here, you know, we're, I think we're working hard to hit the other 14% because I think we know how important everybody here is working as a team and, and really trying to, trying hard to avoid that. So it really, at least for me, puts, you know, light bulbs on as far as like you're trying to get a big chunk of money out of the least part of the graph.
Right.
And it's, it's, it's a challenge.
And be able to provide services for students to be able to achieve.
That's what I mean.
Right.
Wow.
I know one of our speakers that came up this evening to speak spoke to teachers retiring and, and losing the, the brain trust that we have in, in those teachers, and that's, that's always a scary point. For me, I hated to see teachers that I knew were great in the classroom retire, but they're going to retire anyway at some point in time, so we are going to lose them. And the incentive that we offered this year to, to retire early is, is allowing them to retire, allowing us to hire new teachers at a, at a lower wage. And projected at this point, I believe, it's about $850,000 that we will save in, in salaries this year, this coming year. So that's significant that we were able to get that, and that's going to help that 7.5% go up, so it's a necessary evil, unfortunately. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Well, you don't go very far, do you? Tax levy election.
Okay. The board has been presented with a preliminary budget of a deficit of $7 million. Administration has met with the stakeholders in the district and to determine cuts to apply to the final budget in June. But along with these cuts, administration is recommending a tax levy to be placed on the August 5th, 2014 ballot, ballot, which will allow the district to recoup revenue loss from the decreased assessed valuation over the last seven years.
Any motion? It moved by Mrs. Hogseth to place a 50 cent.
That's correct.
Tax levy on the August 7th.
August 5th.
5th, 11th of this year. Any second?
Second.
Mr. Brown, second, second motion?
Ready?
Any discussion?
How much money would that generate?
Approximately $4 million.
I get a little confused with all this title, this title that, bond, this bond that, you know, money. Which pocket do we, do we pay, pay, pay our employees out?
All right, we have what's called the operating funds, and so the operating funds is where the tax levy money goes into.
Oh.
And that's why we're trying to pass that.
Awesome.
Bond funds can only be used to pay for facilities, for building improvements, for equipment and things like that. We cannot use that money to pay salaries. We also have a debt service fund that can only be paid for principal and interest on bonds, so.
So if this passes, can we like throw a big party? Will this end all?
No, it's a no, and we still have to cut because we're, it will only generate $4 million, so, and we need $7 million to be balanced, so we will still have to make cuts.
And understand that the money is not, I mean, our fiscal year starts July 1st, and so since the election is in August, it, it doesn't necessarily affect this year's budget, although we can start collecting in July. Is that correct?
In January. We can start collecting in January.
January, right?
Yes.
January.
And is the $4 million based on the, the total tax allocation, or does it take into consideration the discount of, of what we'll actually collect? Because if not everyone knows, as you've taught us, me certainly, that we don't collect all the taxes that are actually to.
Right.
We don't collect them because the state doesn't collect.
Right. That would be the total allocation.
Okay.
So we typically collect about 93 to 96. I, in the preliminary budget, I put 93% historically the last few years.
But the $4 million would actually be 100%,
Right.
which, which won't happen.
Yes.
So we actually won't even get that.
That's correct.
And it's also based on the current assessed valuation.
That's correct.
If the current trend keeps going, then that $4 million gets reduced even more.
Correct. But we're going to work very hard with our municipalities to see if we can't try to figure out how to get people back into the district and, and here, so.
I've got a question, a little off track, but kind of financial here, would you would carry? Was it last meeting that we had? You guys are doing a facility study?
That's correct.
I went, I, you probably mentioned, when, when does that preliminary thing, you know, the results come back?
We've got a RFP, or RFQ, I'm sorry, out right now.
Oh, okay.
And to try to find someone to do that study for us. And then that should start, Terry?
This is more his area, so I'm going to defer.
I was just wondering, when, when, you'd be hopeful to have these results, at least preliminary results?
It'll probably be a month or two because we'll open bids on the, at the end of the month, they're due, and once we open them, then they'll get started right away. There is some preliminary work that's already been completed that they'll be able to use, which should be shorter than it normally would be.
So the reason I'm tying this together is, you think you'd have them back possibly by the end of July? Okay, so, so that we kind of get a picture with the tax levy and all that kind of stuff with.
Now, they're studying the facilities to look at our, so that we can maybe go out for a.
I understand, but I meant as far as like getting a big picture.
Right. Of what our needs are. That's correct. That's correct.
Any more questions from Mr. Trisick? Seeing none. All those in favor placing a, of tax levy on the August 5th, 2014 ballot for 50 cents? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign? Motion carries?
Thanks very much.
Let's, let's hope it's more successful than the last one. Mr. O'Neill, grass will soon be growing.
It's coming. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to just talk a little bit about the Facilities Department received an open sealed bid for a grass cutting services contract. We distributed 11 bid packets, which fortunately all 11 submitted bids, which made, gave us a much better bid. Our bid came in almost $5,000 lower than last year's, actually the last five years. And so we're happy to have a low bid from a company called Ideal Landscape, Landscaping Group Incorporated from Maryland Heights. What they will do for us is cut the 16 properties, the entire location, grass and framing around fence lines, curves, buildings, signposts, playgrounds, equipment, et cetera, and they'll clean up after themselves on walkways, sidewalks, and so forth. It was nice, like I said, they have 11 bids and gave us a wide range of choices. We checked the backgrounds, and we would like to recommend that the board approve a contract with Ideal Landscaping Group Incorporated for $1,522 per cut at the 16 properties or a total of $42,616 for 28 cuts for the year.
And then we approve.
Second. It moved by Mrs. Hogseth, and second by Mr. Brown. Second, right? Any discussion?
Is there a reason we don't do this ourselves, or?
Mainly cost. We do the other 14 properties using our staff. We just don't have enough staff, and for $42,000, we couldn't, almost couldn't hire one more person, and we would need about five more people and extra equipment to be able to do those 16 properties in a timely manner during the, the main, the main part of the growing season.
So then.
I would like to, but it would be a much higher cost.
So I, you know, I have to ask the follow-up, which is, why don't they do all the grass cutting?
Because we do have the equipment and the staff available that are, that are there to do other jobs as well, and that's one of the problems there. Besides cutting the other 14, they're doing other things in between to keep up with other projects and maintenance in the district. And so since we do have them, we can use them for that and other projects, we take them to bigger properties and, and give them to a contractor.
I do believe part of the problem is that it's seasonal, and so if you hire a guy to do it in April, and what's he going to do in November? Then it becomes, you know, we have sufficient crew to handle what we have now, but if we add additional staff, then what do we do with them on, on the rest of the year? That, that becomes an issue. Where we lay them off, then we end up paying. Yeah, so it's, it's a vicious cycle. But I'm glad to see that the, the more extensive bidding, which I attribute to you, I assume, as you have, since you've taken the plan over, have.
I have a good staff.
Have been responsible for making sure the bidding process is, is more extensive than it has been in the past. I appreciate that. And it pays off.
That's my only question. How often is this bid?
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, letting a grass cutting contract for $42,616 to Ideal Landscape, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign? Okay, we get our grass cut this year. All right. Mr. Aru is going to take over policy revision, 4041.
The Missouri revised statute 610.015 allows members of public governmental bodies to cast roll call votes in a meeting if the member is participating via video conferencing. Language allowing video conferencing is being presented in Board Policy 4041, Board Policy Process. A copy of the revised statute and supporting documents have been provided, and this is the second reading, for board approval. Board is asked to approve this, this policy proposal.
So moved, second. It moved by Mr. Schrader, and second by Mr. Martinez to approve using video conferencing for board members to attend board meetings.
I would just like to say that when we didn't vote, but when we did try to video conference Mr. Schrader in, there was a lot of technical problems, and they don't always get everything that is going on during the meeting, and that's why I'm voting no. I don't think it's good.
Can I just comment on that? Since we tried that once, it does sort of work, but it depends a lot on the speed of the internet connection on both ends, and I think we have built out our network well enough, but I don't think the problem is on our end. But when you're dealing with someplace offsite, like at my daughter's house in Minnesota, her connection may not be as fast, and I think that's always going to be a bit of a concern. This policy does say specifically video conferencing, not teleconferencing, so that we really do know that the person on the other end is the person they say they are because we can see them. That's one of the specifics that's listed in policy is not teleconferencing, which would be only voice.
Perhaps, perhaps in the future, when we do it, we'll also do it by phone so you have a backup, a more continuous line to, to be able to hear everything. The, the video conferencing is so that we can see the person who's actually voting. It's not just a voice on the phone, and so that's, that's the purpose behind that. It used to be that the phone conversations were, and still are phone conversations, are not, they can participate by phone, but they can't vote, so the video conference adds, actually adds their vote to the, the meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign?
Aye.
Next policy revision is 4044.
Missouri revised statute 610.015 allows members of public governmental bodies to cast roll call votes in a meeting if the member is participating via video conferencing. Language allowing video conferencing is being presented in Board Policy 4044, Suspension of Policies and Bylaws. Copy of the revised statute and supporting documents have been provided to the board. Board is asked to approve this as the second reading.
So moved. It moved by Mr. Martinez, and second by.
I second.
Mr. Chabot. The reason we're doing this is this, there's more than one place in the policy book that requires this, and so we're just approving them for each different place.
Correct, that's right.
It's no, no different than the last one, just a different place in the policy. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign? Policy number 5054.
Missouri revised statute 610.015 allows members of public governmental bodies to cast roll call votes in a meeting if the member is participating via video conferencing. Language allowing video conferencing is being presented in Board Policy 4054, Board Meeting Agenda. A copy of the revised statute and supporting documents have been provided for the board, and the board is asked to approve this as the second read.
So moved. It moved by Mr. Chabot, second by, moved by Mr. Martinez, and second by Mr. Chabot. There we go. Really heard their voices. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign? All right. Propose the procedure for calling an emergency meeting of the board. Hold on, hold on just a moment.
I'll be this one.
Oh, I missed one, I'm sorry. Policy 4058.
Missouri revised statute 610.015 allows members of public governmental bodies to cast roll call votes in a meeting if the member is participating via video conferencing. Language allowing video conferencing is being presented in Board Policy 4058, Parliamentary Procedure. A copy of the revised statute and supporting documents have been provided to the board, and the board is, is asked to approve this policy as a second read.
So moved.
I second.
It moved by Mr. Martinez, and second by Mr. Chabot. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign? Close, same sign. All right, next. Next, proposed procedure for calling emergency meeting of the board. Mr. Schrader?
Are we skipping number 23?
I'm sorry, what?
Are we skipping number 23?
Proposed procedure for calling emergency meeting of the board.
Okay, my list is, nevermind, it's listed in 24, not 23.
I'm just looking at what I have.
I'm sorry. Yeah, this, my proposed wording, which I sent to all board members, is specific for what are called emergency meetings. And emergency meetings are emergency by the definition of the sunshine law. And in the sunshine law, any meeting that has to be held with less than 24 hours notice to the public is called an emergency meeting. And the difficulty with that is with a short notification, for members, sometimes it's difficult to get members notified. Our normal way of notifying about general meetings is by email. And often, a member will only check their email perhaps in the morning, and if it's an emergency meeting that's called at four o'clock in the afternoon for seven o'clock the next morning, that board member would miss the meeting. And I checked with the Attorney General's Office, and the Attorney General's Office said that the sunshine law does not address the problem of notifying members. Their attitude is that if members don't get notified and they don't show up, you might not have four members, which is a quorum, in which case you would not be able to do any business. Which, in many cases, would be all right, except our meeting on the 20th of February. We had two lawyers sitting in the room that we were paying to be there. And we were lucky by accident to have four members present. And if one of those members had missed, we'd be paying lawyers and not being able to have the meeting. So I think that we should have a top procedure perhaps, rather than a policy. I don't know exactly where it goes. We do have a section in the policy book about notification of meetings. I think it's particularly important that by the board president, who normally calls such a meeting, making direct telephone contact or personal contact with each member of the board, so they would know of the meeting clearly and know the content of the meeting. And then the advantage for the board president is they would know ahead of time if there was a quorum present, if a quorum would be present, and would be able to conduct business.
I need a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Sir, I'm sorry, what?
This would be a first reading, correct?
Okay. Make it a first reading, that's fine.
It just had to be a first reading?
Yes, if you were applying this to the policy.
Right, right.
The policy versus...
Right, so this is basically discussion...
Yeah, first reading, that's correct.
I would just like to make a statement of past practice before... Okay.
Yeah, a small piece.
Hate that thing.
There you go.
Okay. Note, past practice was that whenever we had a board meeting that was not at seven o'clock, then, which was a regular Wednesday night board meeting, the board secretary would call all board members and remind them, we didn't use the email, they would remind him of the meeting, because some board members did forget that there was a meeting or that we needed to be there at six or 6:30 or whatever. So I really don't think that we need a policy for this or a procedure. I think we just need to go back to past practice and anything that is not as scheduled as a Wednesday night at seven, the board secretary...
Yeah, I think, I think that's fine, yet whether it's the board secretary or the president, I think an additional phone call and an email to have that redundancy is probably best practice, just to make sure. And then it's of course up to that board member to either check voicemail and/or email to make sure that they're at least aware. I think the, I would caution against saying that the president has to call, because then that limits who can communicate that. Really, the secretary or someone in her stead or his stead can certainly make a phone call and let someone know.
Well, I didn't mean the, this board secretary, I meant Margie would have done it. Laurie would have done it.
No, I know. I'm saying, yeah, I just, I wouldn't limit it if it's gonna be a written procedure and/or policy, and I don't think it needs to be at the policy level, but it's gonna be written, I wouldn't limit it, because you want to make it easier. So if the president is, you know, unable to make the phone calls and the board secretary or the superintendent's secretary is out of touch, because she's on vacation, we don't want to have written a procedure that now actually makes it harder.
I can respond to that. If we go back to one of the first emergency meetings that was called, that meeting was called approximately seven or eight o'clock on a Saturday evening for a four o'clock Sunday afternoon meeting, and our board secretary is normally not at work during those hours.
Right, well, I think that's what I'm saying.
You're talking about specifically only these emergency meetings.
Well, right, no, absolutely. Yeah, we're in agreement, whether you think it or not. But what I'm saying is, you wouldn't want it to say only the secretary or only the president. Clearly, if the president is calling in on a Saturday, and it's gonna happen 24 hours later on a Sunday, he or she is probably gonna have to take care of that task.
Right, and that's been our policy, at least in my experience. I have received phone calls, except for that February 20th meeting, from the president. And I just think the phone call, the personal contact, was necessary. I agree with you, it doesn't have to be the president.
Sure.
Because normally, the president is calling the meeting, the president makes six phone Or one.
Right. I personally feel that, you know, we choose to sit here, and we have to take a level of responsibility to make sure that we maintain contact with all board members as well as the administration. In today's technology, the beauty thing, the beautiful thing about it is I get the emails at my office, I get the emails if I'm in northern Idaho on my phone, and I'm able to respond very quickly. Now, in this particular case, because this is what really prompted it, was that there was a lot of dialogue that was happening amongst board members of being able to be in attendance for that meeting. So if Mr. Morris would have called you, said, hey, we're gonna have a meeting at this time, and you said yes, but then he calls Mr. Eber and Mrs. Hoxhead, and they go and say, I can't, I need to do it at five o'clock. So then they call you back at five, or say, hey, let's do five, and you're like, no, that's not gonna work, but we can do it at six. So then he's calling back to Mr. Eber, and Mrs. Hox says, hey, can we do six? And they're like, yes, but then for me, I can't do it. Four was perfect for me. So I really have a problem with the phone calls. I do not find the emails, because it allows constant communication back with all of us. And personally, I just think you should take the responsibility of make sure that you have the technology that's enabled for you to receive your emails at all times.
Did anyone receive a phone call for this particular meeting?
No, the president needed very clearly, called no one.
There's equitable, anyway.
All right. Any further discussion? Thank you, we'll revisit that again next month. Modifications and amendments to student records. Mr. Chabot.
Thank you. Over the last several months, it was brought to this board's attention of, it's not really a process, I guess a practice, of expunging disciplinary records. While the practice in itself is bothersome, what's more bothersome for me is the fact that once those records are expunged, there's no record of anything, of even them being expunged. And I just think it's prudent for this board to look at creating policy, modifying policy, maybe establishing a procedure, that when records are going to be expunged, modified, altered in any way, that there is a true hearing that consists of more than just one individual, perhaps a hearing of three individuals, so evidence is presented, and then their discussion can actually be made amongst, is it worthy for those records to be expunged or modified? So today, my intention was to introduce a policy change, but after talking amongst board members and as well as administration, we felt that this was a pretty big task. So what I'm recommending is that we actually establish a committee that can consist of a couple of board members as well as administration, to look at proposing some type of a policy or procedural change.
Good to me. I'd first like to, we need to establish that committee, and so, besides yourself, who would like to serve on that committee?
Well, I have a question of Rob first. You know, in the past, our former superintendent, Dr. R. McCoy, I've asked him many times, do we have a discipline problem? Because my phone rings constantly about discipline issues in the district. And he always stated to me, and I think he stated at a public meeting, there's no data to support it. I'm not vehemently opposed to this, but, I mean, are you aware of some data that we don't have, or something that, I mean, why would you just pick this out of the air to bring this? I mean, what prompted you to do that?
I would love to go into great detail. Unfortunately, I think all of us in this table here can agree that we don't want to violate FERPA. So, but it was a discussion that did come up regarding particular students and their disciplinary records.
So you're talking about some of the top secret stuff that we only see?
It came up in some discussions, yes.
Again, is there anybody who on the board who would like to serve on this committee besides Mr. Chabot?
How about you?
Back to the data point, it's just things that came up. You don't have actual data to support this, do you?
I do not.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I'm not trying to argue with you. I think it's good for kids, you know, but I just kind of wondered where this came from.
Instead of a committee, I would rather, he has sort of a draft started, I would rather in one of our work-study sessions, we as a group do it instead of three people going together, bringing it back to us. I think it really needs, there's lots of people that have some good ideas on this board, and I hate to limit it to just three. I think, I think Rob has a good start, and I think if we did it in a work-study session as a group, we would get further. I've seen how...
Well, maybe we could do this at one of our infamous retreats. Something that we can work on with administration as well as the board. Just let you, a retreat?
Where's that retreat this year? Is it Spain, or did we pick France?
It's probably in the fishbowl, right there, next on to your left there.
Yes, retreats are not really retreats, are they? Retreat, it makes something much more...
The problem is, our policy says we're not allowed to be outside of the district.
Can we change that?
So if you're comfortable with that...
If we change the policy, we can change the policy, because that's what the policy
If you're comfortable with doing it at a retreat or a special study session, then that's fine. I'll hire you on that.
Yeah, I'm fine. I think that it's more people involved in that discussion is better.
Very good. Mr. Larue, next time we have a study session, we'll bring that up. As probably, we will do the same thing with the next one, which is a project labor agreement. Project labor agreements are agreements between entities such as school boards and labor organizations to hire only, or contract only with organizations that have an apprenticeship program, so that they become, the workers that are working in our school district are trained to do the best job that they can do, are highly skilled, they're safe workers, it makes the projects go faster and easier. And I want to bring a project labor agreement to the district at some point here in the near future. Typically, when we're doing larger projects, building buildings, adding additions and stuff like that, is when it really comes into play. Hopefully, that will be in our near future, so I'd like to have this in place prior to that, so that we can move forward. But I will ask that we either form a committee that would look at how to do that, or we would study at the next study session, whichever the board's preferences.
Do you have a draft?
I do, I don't have it with me tonight. I had it, we had it back in September also.
So if you have a draft in that...
I can send, I can, yeah, we have a draft of a proposal, we can modify it to however we need to, if you're comfortable.
Would this be a board committee or a district?
Well, it'd be board and Mr. Larue and Mr. O'Neil probably, since he's in charge of that sort of stuff. Maybe Ms. Juzyk, since she is...
She's got the money.
And she's... What?
Well, she doesn't really have very much to do, you know, let's put her on another committee.
So which is your preference? Would you rather do a committee, or would you rather do it in a board-study session?
Committee or me?
I prefer committee.
Okay. I would like to serve on that committee. Does anybody else like to serve on that committee? Mr. Brown? So I will set up a meeting for the, excuse me?
I was just curious if you had a number of board members you wanted to commit to?
Two's fine, three, three's welcome.
Two's good.
Keep it under four. That becomes another kind of meeting, and we gotta...
Yeah, and if I remember, I think I just put myself on another committee. No, no, actually, that's gonna be a work-study session.
Yeah.
So, yeah, well, no, I'm good.
You're good, okay. Two's good. Me and Mr. Brown and myself, I'll get in contact with Mr. Larue, and we'll set that up.
Mr. President, I would be willing to serve.
I'm sorry, what?
I would be willing to serve.
There's three. All right.
You know, is it a question that, I mean, how would we go? I've got another question for Rob on this whole expunging and setting policy. Hey, Rob, what exactly is that? I mean, I mean, I don't know if we gotta ask Gary Deals, or what, I mean, is that something where they have, they have a hearing or something? I mean, what is that?
I think we're out of order, because we already talked about this a while ago.
Well, he just, I just asked. Leslie, Leslie, I just asked.
I know you asked, but I think he's asking, I think we're still out of order where we should be.
I withdraw.
Thank you.
Strategic Plan Update. Mr. Finkelstein and Ms. Mix.
Yes, we will now hear from Steve Finkelstein and Gigi Mix of Experience On Demand with
Good evening, everyone. We are pleased to share with you the progress that we've made since the last update in December. So today, we're gonna walk through the current situation, an update on where we stand in the process, some of the survey results, to reiterate those, and then we had a focus group made up of about 40 parents and some community leaders, and we want to share not only the results of those focus groups, but the consistency and alignment with what the focus group said, consistent with what 1,200 surveys said. And that's the intersection of the survey and focus groups. We'll talk about some recommendations going forward to build on the success and engagement and commitment that we're already achieving, and then we'll recommend some next steps. Sound okay? So the current situation is, we've received now, it's up to 1,200 surveys, and back in December, when some of the audience requested other ways of getting input, we provided surveys that were taken home, people would come on campus with computers. Some of the surveys were filled out manually, and they were keyed in. So in the last couple of months, we received a 23% increase in the number of surveys that participated, or about 200-plus surveys. participated, or about 200-plus surveys. In addition to that, a strategic planning committee was formed, and that was against one of the focus groups. We know that there are some budget cuts taking place and some reallocations in progress, and it's our understanding that the fine work being done on the strategic plan and the input from both the survey and the focus groups is being used as a guide to make some of the strategic decisions on those cuts. Because the strategic plan is one of your ways of looking at the future, and so the allocation of resources should be consistent with that. We know that there's an interim process right now with the superintendent, and we know that there's election coming up on April 8th. So based on this current situation, we will talk about some recommendations and observations. So if you take a look at the strategic planning update, we've really gathered all the information, both with the 1,200-plus surveys and the parent focus group, and we even had one four-hour board, not retreat in another country, but in the boardroom across the way. And we started the process of really looking at in detail, what should our mission be, what should our value be, what's our vision, et cetera. And so with that, and the input from the parent group, we're right in the middle of strategic plan development. And we'll talk about what's gonna take place in the months of April and May as a recommendation. So, the survey results, when we take a look at the major initiatives, if you look at in the far right-hand corner, these are ranked from high to low, maintaining accreditation, promoting academic rigor and achievement, engaging parents, students, teachers, the administration community, closing the gap between gifted students and all other district students, and promoting a culture of safety, lack of disruptive behavior, et cetera, as well as collaboration and more focus groups, were the top five or six initiatives that the survey said we should focus on. And if we take a look at the issues, maintaining accreditation, disruptive behavior, making sure there's no violence or bullying in the classroom, lack of parent involvement, consistency for students, and again, both the priorities of these issues came from the focus groups. And I'd like to acknowledge, are there a few people here that were in those focus groups? If you could stand up, please? And thank you for sticking around. But I encourage you, anyone in this room that's not in one of the focus groups, to please, thank you very much for your input, to talk to these people, because they walked away feeling like their voice is heard. And these are the kind of comments you're gonna be hearing. It wasn't just a survey. We had two focus groups for three hours each, broke up into teams, a lot of interaction. It was very impressive to see what we had. In terms of the challenges, and these are the challenges that came up, what you first heard, the last two slides came up from the focus groups, and these are the challenges that came up from the 1,200 surveys. And then later, Gigi's gonna talk about the alignment of both inputs to see that things are pretty in the same direction. We talked about teachers needing more development. We talked about the retention and morale of teachers, especially with pay freezes or pay cuts. We talked about students maintaining high standards, high expectations, accreditation and engagement. We talked about the financial, the finance situation, how do we engage all stakeholders in the community? And that's not just, you know, the parents and teachers, it's community leadership as well as the students. We talked about, we heard tonight, updating and upgrading the facilities, and pleased to hear that that study's already taking place. And then about the leadership to provide direction, one of the major inputs we heard is that we're one district in that 20 buildings. And that we need to be more proactive, so rather than put out issues, how can we put programs in place? And we're starting to hear some of those as we listen to some of these presentations. We talked about keeping up with technology, again, listening to some of the ideas that have been brought up, of how to give our students the right technology as well as our teachers to be competitive. We talked about business processes, aligning the processes, and to make sure those are consistent across the schools and the buildings. We talked about the classroom size needs to be addressed. I know that's gonna be an issue when you start looking at, what do we do with teachers if the student population increases and if the headcount goes down? You just do the math, and that's gonna be a challenge. And then the climate has to be free of disruptions in the classroom, enforce the current rules, making sure we have the right security, lack of bullying, et cetera. Leverage the staff's talents, optimize what limited resources we have to leverage their strengths, and then establish accountability for results. So we're not just focusing on doing things, we're focusing on results. And then the last thing is consistency. So how do we become, if we're gonna become one district in that 20 different buildings, how do we become consistent in terms of policies, procedures, programs, and share the best So, this slide is a summary of the mission, now this is not in concrete, but this incorporates what came from the surveys, what came from the focus groups, prioritize, and as well as the board. And then in the focus groups, they came up with five or six different versions, and these were the ones that were ranked the highest. So the current mission statement is that all students of the Ferguson-Forest School District will have the knowledge, skills, abilities, and attitudes to become productive citizens and lifelong learners in a changing global society. And don't ask me to repeat them. The recommendation, a little bit shorter, and there's some very powerful words in here. We will embrace and empower our students. So one of the key words is empower our students to believe and achieve in their potential. Because it's really important, the old cliché that I'll believe it when I see it, is really I'll see it when I believe it. And you've seen all the studies, you've heard the president talk about believing in what's possible, through lifelong learning, accountability, respect, and responsibility. So incorporating some of the strong words about lifelong learning, et cetera, in the current, add in some more powerful words, taking ownership and belief in the possibility. Currently, it's our understanding there's no vision or values published on the website. The vision statement is the outcome of the mission, so if you achieve your mission statement, what does your future look like? And you may never reach the vision, but it's something you strive for, and this is what was the highest ranking in your package, there are four or five other alternatives. Some of them are pretty close. Our students will flourish and be lifelong contributors to the success of communities in which they live and work. So it's not just our students will achieve academic success, but that our students will continue to be leaders and contributors to grow communities. And then, what are the core values? So the values are your beliefs, it's your personalities, so when people come into this district, this is what it's all about. And we came up with about 30 or 40 values, but they were narrowed down to these. Accountability, in no order, but this is just the framework. Accountability, that people are gonna be held accountable for results and not just activities. That's an environment and culture of trust, that we encourage and promote innovation and creativity, that we strive for academic excellence, that we provoke consistency so that we're one district, which is the last one. We provide a safe environment for learning, and that we're student-focused. How's that sound? Pretty exciting district to me. And we've looked at all the other major school districts in St. Louis and other cities, and this will stand at the top of all the others. Now I'm gonna turn this over to Gigi to talk about how the alignment of both the focus groups, which is one source of input, aligned with the 1,200 surveys, which is consistent to show that we're moving in the right direction. So Gigi, go ahead.
Thank you, Steve, and good evening. What we did was, we looked at the themes that came from the original survey, the 1,200 people that answered the original survey, and you see those on the left, and then the issues that came out of the focus groups, and then we asked the focus groups to look at the issues and prioritize them. So rather than read everything, what we saw that matched across the board was, when you look at students, they're talking about achievement and accreditation. That came across in the 1,200 surveys, that came across in the focus groups, and that came across as being a priority in the focus groups, and we asked them to take their survey and rank things. Engagement, again, was very important. That came across in the 1,200 surveys, that came across from the focus groups met and talked, and they came across when they took their survey. And they talked about involvement, they talked about collaboration was another key word. So that's very, very important, and I heard that mentioned earlier this evening in some of the other presentations, how it's important when parents get involved. Finances was another issue that was brought up in the survey, it was brought up in the focus groups, and it was something that they were concerned about stability, they were concerned about allocation, I think that was covered earlier this evening as well, and how money and supplies are being used. And they brought up some specific examples during the focus groups, which helped explain why they had some of those issues. Leadership and accountability was an important theme. We found that in the initial surveys of the 1,200, and that also came up as a priority when we looked at the focus groups, and they said, what do you want? And I think when Steve was talking about the values earlier, leadership and accountability was key. Discipline was extremely important. That came up in the surveys, that came up in a number of the verbatim comments that we saw in the initial 1,200 surveys. They were concerned about disruption, bullying in the classroom, and other discipline issues. The focus groups brought up those same things. They were concerned about disruptive conduct in classrooms, which made it more difficult for the students to learn. Again, bullying and violence was something that was mentioned during the focus groups with the parents and community people. And then in looking at the survey they took and prioritizing what they thought was important, promoting a culture of safety and disruptive, lack of disruptive behavior, was what they thought was extremely important. Teachers, staff, and the classroom was a theme that came out in the initial survey. Providing training and development and mentoring was something that they thought was important. They were concerned about retention of teachers, morale of teachers. They wanted to know that the resources were available there, and that what was needed was there for the students and the teachers. They thought training was important and development was important for the teachers. And when the priorities came out in the surveys, and a lot of this comes from verbatim comments that are made in the surveys that were taken from the people that participated in the focus groups, they brought up curriculum, they brought up teacher development, and they brought up morale. So there, as you see through this, what they're saying when we initiated the first survey, and what they're saying in the focus groups when they followed up their participation in it with a survey that they took, the same themes are recurring, which tells us those are the priorities we need to look at as we work in the strategic plan. Consistency in processes was another theme that we saw, and that was brought up initially in the 1,200 surveys, and again, with the focus group of parents and community residents. Resources and technology was important. It was important to update facilities, it was important to have the teachers have the technology and tools they need to improve productivity for them and for the students. Facilities, again, were something when the focus group, parents and community, were asked to prioritize what was important, facilities were brought up again. Productivity was a concern, using the technology tools were things that were mentioned. So we did this basically just to say, we heard this, and then we heard almost the same thing again, and we asked it again. Really, there were three different instances of hearing these same themes, which really tells you that this is where attention needs to be paid. So, as a result, we put a few of the verbatim comments here that we received on this last survey, which was participated in by the people that were in the focus groups of parents and community residents. And basically, just highlighting some of the things that were said, involve parents, staff, and community, so again, engagement. Respect, accountability, kindness, responsibility, enduring to the end perseverance. So they're talking about character here for the students, the importance of that. And then accountability as far as an engagement, district leaders, principals, or teachers meeting with the parents. And again, collaboration. And again, you see in the next one, I'm just highlighting, and each of these, teachers and parents need a way to be more involved together. And this one I found particularly touching, it is a parent saying, I would have donated money to help get supplies if I'd just known that there was something I could do. So that really underscores that engagement can make a difference if the parents know what's going on and have an opportunity to participate. And now Steve's gonna follow up with some recommendations we have.
And for those of you that were not in the meeting in the focus group, there is a little video clip that was put together by our fine photographer over there, who did some candid interviews of both Gigi and myself, but most important about the 40 participants that were in the room. And I believe that's gonna be posted.
It is on.
It's already on, so you can watch that as many times as you like. But based on the recommendations, again, this is from our perspective, some objectivity going forward, strictly enforce the current rules we have right now on disruptive behavior in the classrooms. It's so loud and clear that that needs to be addressed, there's no reason to wait. And then, we're recommending to, because the original strategic planning retreat was supposed to be in December, and because of a few issues that came up, we're recommending, let's wait till after the elections, and let's have a strategic planning retreat in late April or maybe early May, so we can wrap up the strategic plan, get this in place for the coming school year. And then, to sustain and expand the current strategic planning focus group committee, that's made up of some of the five people in this room, plus another 35 or 40, just like you heard, there's gonna be a meeting on Monday, and they're gonna talk about accreditation. Well, this group could be the sounding board that continues to provide that input beyond just surveys. And we're also recommending that this be expanded to continue the engagement and ownership, because we need principals to be engaged, and we need teachers to be engaged. And even though we had their input from the surveys, we're recommending that we have such success in building ownership and commitment and engagement by the community and the parents, why not do the same thing with the principals and the teachers? And then, in late April, we have an expanded retreat out there in the island, and have an interactive retreat that we have all the people that are highly engaged. And then, as I mentioned earlier, as you look at your allocations and cutting budgets or allocating dollars, use the direction of strategic plan as a guide, as input to make your decisions. And then, because inconsistency of policies and procedures enforcing or implementing rules is across the district, one of the things we would do with teachers and principals is not go over mission, vision, values, but actually, why not start looking at, what are consistent policies and what are the inconsistencies? There's no reason to wait on these things. And then, continue to support the efforts to engage the parents. And I believe there's a position in the district right now that's called parent engagement, but whatever resources we need to continue to engage parents, which helps engage community, engage the kids, teachers, and so it's all about engaging everyone, working towards a common goal for the district. Next steps, try to get a focus group with principals and teachers in late March, if possible, or early April, and this may be 20 to 40 or 50, whatever we think the number we could get. And then, if there could be a meeting with the principals to reinforce consistency in the rules, and those rules could be in consistency, not just in discipline, but it could be in any other things that they identify. And then, because everyone's schedules busy, to try to schedule that retreat in late April so that we'd have a month, the month of May, to pull together a nice, polished strategic plan with action steps and measures, responsibilities, accountability, and get that in front of the board in late May or early June, so that you're ready for the new year. That's it. Questions?
Again, this is just for board information, so we don't need a motion on anything. But I do wanna thank both Mr. Pinkstein and Ms. Mix for all their hard work, they have done just yeoman's job of.
Thank you.
Taking this and putting in extra time and effort to make sure everybody was involved, and I really appreciate all your effort on that. So thank you very much.
Well, we're also engaged in this process too.
I can tell. I can tell.
Thank you for the honesty. And we look forward to the next update. A lot of exciting things are gonna happen, so thank you again.
Thank you.
I'd like to say the first time I heard about this was about, oh, a year, maybe a year and a half ago, from Chris Martinez, who, I don't know if you wanna say talented us, but kept mentioning it to us, and Dr. R. McCoy, so he was kind of the brainchild of this. So I'd like to hear what you think of this at this point, Chris.
Your last chance.
Thank you, Mr. Ebert.
Thank you, Mr. Ebert.
It's all your fault.
Well, define this.
Well, how the process.
Well, first of all, I agree with Mr. Morris. I mean, I think the effort, if anyone's been involved in this process, and I've had the good fortune of being able to be on both sides of the strategic planning process as a facilitator, and then also as a participant, as I am right now. I've not seen it done better, or more thoroughly than this, so this is fantastic, so thank you, both of you. This is really great. And what's great about it is, it has been nimble. When you think about the things that our district has undertaken over the last several months, since we've agreed to invite these folks into our family and to help us through this, they've changed it as the need has presented itself, and that's what has been most important. But on top of that, what is so great about this process is that, as you'll see it unfold, all of this stuff, interviews and surveys and focus groups, all of that will boil down to some really simple decisions and goals, where everyone can say, I had a voice, and we know exactly what we need to accomplish now. And hopefully, all of us will know our roles as parents, as teachers, as administrators within that platform, and that's what's really, really exciting about this. So I, for one, though that timeline would mean that I'm off the board, would be happy to be, you know, remain part of some sort of committee that continues with the strategic planning process. I feel like I owe it to the effort and to the process to see it through, and I'm going to have to make time to do that. So in that sense, yeah, I'm very pleased. I don't know if that's what you're looking for. That's what you get.
I've been excited about it since the beginning, and I just can't wait to see the finished product. I know I'm impatient, and I know there's a lot of processes.
So only a few.
But I'm really, really excited about it. So I was just kind of wondering, because this is my first time through this, and you've been kind of articulated, you had done some work in this before, and you kind of just wanted some words on it to see how you thought about it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
You're welcome. See you next time.
Suggestions and/or questions, a maximum of 15 minutes is provided for suggestions and/or questions from members of the audience. Members of the audience who wish to speak for the board or request to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and limit their remarks to three minutes. In keeping with District Policy 4059 and Personnel Law, speakers should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. To comply with Missouri's Sunshine Law and District Policy 4054 and 4059, all members will not respond to comments made during the public comment period. Subject of public comments will be noted in the minutes and appropriately addressed by the district. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Ben.
Hello. All of you know me as not only a parent, but also now a school board candidate. It kind of hit me last night, actually, that this could very well be my last meeting as just a parent and the audience, and that next month's meeting, I could, there's a potential of being a school board member-elect. I'm excited about that prospect, but I just wanted to just talk about a couple of things really quick. First of all, Chris, I want to say thank you for your service as a fellow Parker Road parent. We have that mutual connection there with Parker Road, and I look forward to still seeing you around school and stuff, even though I don't see you here. Hopefully, I'll still see you there at the board meetings, too.
And others will be good, too. We'll be happy to learn that my kids actually live in the district.
Yes, they do, and I take their pictures for the yearbook. Okay, and so a couple of the other things I wanted to bring up, I'm very excited that I have been able to participate in the focus groups and with the strategic plan, and I hope that I have an opportunity to serve on the board and be able to bring that, make that implemented within the district. But I just wanted to say that I know with the news this evening, that Dr. McCoy has resigned. I know that there's probably mixed feelings throughout the district, but I just kind of want to, I want to refocus us all, as this is his career. I completely understand his side of things when it comes to, he wants things to be confidential, and I respect that, and I wish him all the best. And no matter if he's with our district or elsewhere, I wish him the best. But the task that we have at hand in the next few months is going to be, and I've said this before, it's going to be to find a new superintendent. And I noticed during this board meeting that there's been a little bit of bantering back and forth, I'm not sure exactly what the dynamic is right now. But I just want to say that going forward, no matter who's sitting in those seats, we're all going to have to work as a team, and there's a big task at hand, and we're going to really need to make sure that we pull together, and they said one district, we need to be one board. So with that, good luck, Mr. Morris, good luck, Mr. Chabot, good luck to all the other candidates, and I look forward to seeing all of you on April 8th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody else who wishes to speak? Dr. Lerman.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to say also thank you to Chris for the work that you've done on the board. And I'd also like to say, too, that yes, I am a candidate running for the board, and hopefully, I'll be sitting in one of the seats there and taking on that big responsibility. I want to echo what Kim said, too, about Dr. McCoy. It's very sad, very difficult decision that was made, and the process that we went through. But it's time for us to heal. It's time for us to move on. It's time for us to select a highly qualified superintendent for this district. I'm up for the task, and I'm hoping that the district and the community will see fit to elect me to be a part of the board. And I look forward to working with whomever's on the board. And I thank you all for your commitment, and thank you for this opportunity.
Good evening to each and every one of you. What I want to say is, thank you all for setting the fire under the community. That's what I'm proud of, that now we can see that it takes a community to raise our children, no matter what has happened throughout this process. If you haven't done anything else, you've brought a community together, and my hat goes off to each and every one of y'all. You might have not understood the part you played in it, but God had a purpose, and He had a plan. It's no more than to bring the other people that you thought that didn't care about their children and their grandchildren, they do. And you have seen more of our faces in the last several months than you all have ever seen while you were campaigning. Don't forget, because this face, you will definitely see again. I promise you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak? Seeing no others, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session. They're moved by Mr. Martinez and seconded by Mrs. Hogshead to move to executive session. Mr. Shabot, you call the room. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. Appreciate you all being here, and we will see you soon.